We good? That's right. You ready?
Yeah.
That's right. All right, we'll call the meeting of the June eight, twenty twenty one Granite City Community Union School Board for number nine board meeting to the board. Roll call please.
Stacy?
Here.
Vinnie?
Here.
Canobel?
Here.
Curran?
Here.
Nun, I. McMasters?
Here.
Wilmzmyr?
Here.
Got it, Cormy?
Thank you very much. And please stand and pledge allegiance, followed by an indicator by Pastor Jared Corzine.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America, an interior republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm Pastor Jared Corzine from Unity Baptist Church, and very thankful to be part of this and part of our supportive school board. Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we ask for your blessing upon the conversation that's going to happen tonight. Lord, we pray especially for wisdom and discernment. God, that the decisions that this group makes has such an impact on our community, on our kids. And so we pray for the welfare of our children to grow and to be in a better place because of the work that they do here tonight. So we pray that you would guide them in truth and in harmony and, Lord, in respectful work together. God, we thank you for this community. We pray that you would continue to bless our school systems, all of our schools, that we would continue to thrive together. Be with our children, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate it. All right, Superintendent Cannon, any public comment?
No, there is none.
Public comment, all right. The approval of the minutes from the last board meeting of May twenty fifth. A motion by Eric, second by Dr. McMasters. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Canobel?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Nun, I. McMasters?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Wilmzmyr?
Aye.
Consent agenda, and we have on that the bill list.
Some.
Second. Motion by Zach, second by Dr. McMasters. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Canobel?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Nun, I. McMasters?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Wilmzmyr?
Aye.
Recommendations and recommendations, Superintendent Cannon?
Yes, Mr. President of the Board, we just recommend the following requirements of resignations made subject. I will say out. Linda Ames, social studies teacher, Granite City High School, retiring end of the twenty three, twenty four school year. Randall Burgess, social studies teacher, GCHS, retirement end of the twenty five, twenty six school year. Parapheekis, science teacher, Granite City High School, retiring end of the twenty three, twenty four school year. Amy He, science teacher, Granite City High School, retirement end of the twenty four, twenty five school year. And Farah Cooper, the fifth grade teacher, Grigsby, resignation May twenty eight, twenty twenty one. These are some of the most amazing teachers we've had in the district for a long time and will miss them greatly. Hopefully, we have a couple more years.
GCHS, school legend.
I know. Okay, you said that. I was at the legend. But.
How's the lineup?
You're one hell of a debate. I'm here to talk.
Okay, I don't know. Thank you, Superintendent Cannon. Is there a motion?
Still moved. Second.
Motion by Eric, second by Linda. Any discussion? With regret, regrets here, obviously. Roll call, please.
Curran?
Aye.
Nun, I. McMasters?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Canobel?
Aye.
Wilmzmyr?
Aye.
Item eight, I'm sorry, seven B, leave of absence.
Mr. President of the Board, it is recommended. We recommend that the following leaves be approved. Edward Connolly, paraprofessional, effective eight sixteen, twenty one to one, two, twenty two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion on the second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Nun, I. McMasters?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Canobel?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Wilmzmyr?
Aye.
Item eight C, extracurricular resignations.
Mr. President of the Board, you have received information below about this item. Administration is prepared to make recommendations or hold for discussion in executive session. We recommend that the following extracurricular resignation be accepted. Candor Bristol, GCHS, at GCHS, your books sponsor.
So moved.
Second.
Motion on the second. Do you have the exec?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
McMasters?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Canobel?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Nun, I. Wilmzmyr?
Aye.
Item eight D, extracurricular recommendations for Coolidge Junior High School.
Okay, Mr. President of the Board, you can proceed information about this below. The administration is prepared to make recommendations or hold for discussion in the executive session.
To move.
Or do you want me to read them?
I don't think so.
Okay.
There's a lot of them.
Yep.
Second. Got a motion on the second by Eric. Roll call, please.
Stacy?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Canobel?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Nun, I. McMasters?
Aye.
Wilmzmyr?
Aye.
And item eight E, extracurricular recommendations for Granite City High School.
We have received information about this item. Administration is prepared to make recommendations or hold for discussion in executive session. If not, the high school administration is recommending the following extracurricular for the twenty one, twenty two school year.
Another long list. So moved. Second.
I have a quick question. My husband's on this list, so can I vote or not? Like, how does that work?
You can abstain.
Is that?
Usually, they just abstain. Instead, you can state the reason if you care to.
I just didn't know if there was a conflict of interest or something. Thank you. I mean, as a wrestling wife, am I vote no?
You can do that.
You can do that.
Can we stop wrestling? This is for executive session.
Anything you want.
All right, sorry, thank you.
We have a motion and a second.
All right, roll call, please.
Vinnie?
Abstain.
Canobel?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Nun, I. McMasters?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Wilmzmyr?
Aye.
Item eight F, certified and classified subs.
Mr. President of the Board, below you have information about this item. We are prepared to make the recommendation or hold the discussion. If not, we recommend the following applicant be order approved as substitute for the twenty twenty one school year. Certified Josh Mills and classified Randy Johnson.
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the second. Roll call, please.
Canobel?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Nun, I. McMasters?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Wilmzmyr?
Aye.
Item eight D, policies. Yeah, so we talked about this last board meeting, so this is in regards to residency requirements for the administration. And it was pointed out earlier, so we can discuss tonight, happy to discuss in open session. It is not on the agenda for voting on tonight, however. So it would be good to get some input, thought, ideas here from the board as far as if we bring it and set it on the agenda for next time for actual voting on. Happy to hear anybody, if anybody wants to kick it off as far as. Linda may be appropriately used since she handled the policy today.
Thank you, thank you. It's been a difficult time for all of us as we look forward to this new post-pandemic opening of our school buildings. And in that respect, we're looking to see that we get the best that we can get for the children that we know have not only had an extraordinary year at home trying to catch up, trying to get used to the situation of learning without a teacher in front of them. It's our hope that when we go back to school, we will have the best and the brightest principals in those buildings with the knowledge of instructional leadership that is absolutely required now. This is not only for the teachers to have someone who can be a leader that they respect in their building, but they not only respect, but they rely on for information, for conferencing, for coaching. And this is what the children will benefit from in those buildings. So my feeling is that we've got to open up our residency to having the kind of attitude that is needed at this time in Granite City. And that is that our district is a progressive district in terms of wanting to make sure that every child has the right, the right to every bit of education that we can give them, but also, no matter what and where they are, they are just as important as another child. And that is what the value is that we need to share with our children, is that they are very valued. There's just a whole different need now for children. At this point, we know that our students are going to come here with social and emotional needs. We've never asked principals to handle that before. We are now, we are going to have them deeply involved in social and emotional needs of children. Without that, they cannot learn. And the teachers know it. They know what it is to have children who come to school that are unprepared to learn because of things that have happened or things that have gone on for several years in their lives. So we need to have principals that are right on top of it, very well informed and who know how to think outside of the box. They work with their teachers. They're not walking out the door or walking down the hall, but they're helping in the classroom. They walk in, they see the teacher teaching, and they also are looking at what they have in their building. They have to be part of that knowledge base. They have to know, the kids have to know who they are. Every building principal should know every kid's name by heart that's in their building. That's how close they need to be. And we may not, we haven't seen that kind of thing. We have in some of our principals certainly admire, admire the work that they've done, but we can't expect to have six principals retiring and find that extreme quality that I'm talking about in people without seeking everywhere to find them. So I'm just saying that this is a time for us to make a big step in this community, and it's all for kids. It's all for children.
Thank you, Linda. Anybody else?
We talked about this pretty vigorously last time, and I sort of see both sides of that, Linda. We've done it a certain way, and then we get it comfortable the way. I think our community likes the idea of people that are in leadership positions coming and taking part and being part of the community, but that is very difficult to get. We're going to have a lot of administrators retiring over the next couple of years. And one of the things that Stephanie provided us last time was just a rundown of all the districts surrounding us. You could drive in fifty, a hundred mile circle here from the Salto to Collinsville, to East Alton, to Roxanne, to O'Fallon, to Belleville. And when we look at all these school districts, other than, there are several that have required the superintendent, of course, live in the district, but other than that, Granite City, Belleville, and O'Fallon are the only ones that jump out of all those schools that require all the administrators, all the principals, all the assistants, superintendents, all those people that live in districts. Out of probably forty schools here, districts. And so it's kind of not something that, it's kind of an antiquated idea, maybe. It's not that we're not a desirable community. I think we have plenty of nice areas in Granite City. We all live in Granite City, so we're sold on the community. But if someone has a home and a family and they live one town away, but they're exactly who we need as an administrator, it would be a shame not to get that talent. And I think that's why so many districts over the years have all gotten rid of this. So there's just a handful of districts that even require this anymore. It's time has probably come. We may hear from the community some this week, I'm sure we probably will. It's a hot button issue. My wife would tell you, no, you live where your paycheck is. I say, let's get the best people we can, and that'll have to be what we have. There'll be a lot of opinions on that, that's okay. It should be a vigorous discussion, and that's why we decided last time not to vote tonight, but to discuss it a little bit. But when I look at this and I see that there are so many retiring and there's such a shortage of teachers in the state, shortage of administrators, we're going to have to fill those positions with quality people. And you can't ask someone who's just bought a home one town away to now sell it and move here when they're exactly who we need. And so I agree, Linda. I wish everybody wanted to live here, but everybody does not want to live here, and we all, this is America, you kind of get to live where you want to live. They can't live two hundred miles away, they can't get here.
Right.
I think it's time, it's come to consider going forward with this, and I agree with you. The only priority we have is getting the best people, and we wouldn't put an undue burden on them to say, if you don't move here, we don't need you.
And Bill, to be clear here, because, and really for the residents, Granite City residents that are maybe watching, but according to this, the chart that was put together, Granite City, we are the only one that requires all administrative staff, is that correct?
Yes.
For everyone, that's everybody. We are the only one with that residency requirement of all of the school districts listed here. There are a few others that are close. As you mentioned, Belleville would be the next closest one, and then there's O'Fallon, then the drop down beyond that.
That's about it, though.
They have various districts within the towns, too. So not all of them.
And we're not talking about superintendent. We're talking about principals, administrator. Superintendent is required to live in Granite City. And we're thrilled that she's part of our community.
Yes.
Just to go off what they said as far as the list of other schools, like they said, only Granite City requires all administration to live in the school district. Four of the, I believe there's thirty nine on this list, four of them require just the superintendent, which whenever this motion is voted on, that's the recommendation, I believe. And twenty nine of the thirty nine residents have no residency at all. And we talked about this reasoning a little bit when we moved the meeting time, is that other school districts are doing one meeting a month, doing six o'clock meetings, and that's kind of the same thing here. And we should never make a decision just because other school districts are doing it, but I think it's worth looking at, why are we the only one that has a residency requirement for all administration? And it's about educating kids, and like it or not, it's also about competing for good staff, good quality administrators. And like everyone said, there's certainly good arguments on both sides of it. I mean, it's, these are some of the higher paid people in the city, and that definitely helps our tax base. But my whole opinion all along is just that the best use of taxpayer dollars is to hire the person that's best for the job and that can move the school district forward. And that all funnels down from the top, from the superintendent to the administration, and then to the teachers. So I don't think making this decision based solely off of what other districts do is the right reasoning, but if we look at why they make that decision, then that's probably something we should look at when we're competing for them with, for administrators, for principals, and for teachers. I've talked about this before, if you're a teacher that wants to move into administration and you're maybe not quite ready to move to Granite City, I would be hesitant to take a teaching job in Granite City if I knew I wouldn't really have a path to move up. And we all know how hard it is to get teachers nowadays, so I think these are all elements, and like Bill said, it's just a bit of an antiquated policy. So I think that removing it and getting in line with other districts and hiring the person that's best for the job is the best thing for the school district.
I guess my only thought on this really is that, because I'm not disagreeing, we have, we currently, according to this list, have a separate list, not the same list we were talking about, have thirty teachers that have the administration certificate. I don't know that all thirty of them live here or where they live or what have you, I know some of them do. I guess, all things being equal, right? If we're looking for the best candidate, but it's close, somebody who's going to live here and be part of our community, I think, should be given some sort of preference. And I don't know that we can do that, you know, by law.
Yeah, I mean, I was saying, the best candidate, I mean, if all things are actually equal, then, you know, truly.
That maybe makes them a better candidate. Like I said, I'm not disagreeing with anything anybody says. Residency is an antiquated rule, but if we have teachers here who are able to fill those jobs and do it well and do it like Linda said, you know, who are going to be engaged in their building, and by living here are engaged in their community, then, you know, that's probably who we want. I mean, that's probably the perfect candidate, right?
Yeah, to be clear, we do need to hire the best candidate available.
Right.
Regardless of where they live, regardless.
No, and I absolutely agree.
Having, so I have lots of things to say. I love everything you say, I'll try to keep it brief. First of all, having been a teacher in the district, and I don't think I'm betraying any confidences here, if you look at this list of people, there are a handful that perhaps might be interested in administration. However, many of them have had their type seventy fives for quite a long time and have not gone for a position. And that's part, it's not the reality now, but it's still over from whenever people were trying to move to increase their salary on the pay scale, you get the master's degree, and the old saying was, get your type seventy five. Then you have some options later, it's the easier master. I don't think that was the easier route to go. I had my master's before I got the type seventy five. So for me, it really comes down to, as many of you have said, attracting the best of the best. The previous several positions we have tried to hire, or we have hired, no disrespect to those that we have hired, and we're thrilled to have them, but our application pools are not, our applicant pools are not always the deepest that we could be in. Anybody that's in a business or in hiring knows, you get your highest quality hires by having your best, broadest, and deepest pools. So if you consider the number of retirements coming up, in comparison with our current policy and the current people who hold those type seventy fives, we have very shallow pools. And that's a problem, because that doesn't give us the ability to thoroughly, vigorously vet people and find not only who is the most qualified, but who is the best fit, because there's a lot to be said about a fit, anybody working in an organization. There's a lot to be said about qualifications, but also fit. And I'm a proud resident of Granite City, just like everyone else is. I have traveled abroad, got my degrees away, and returned to Granite City because I love Granite City. And again, I talk about myself a lot, but it's because there are many people just like me. I'm an administrator at a school in St. Louis. I do not live in St. Louis because I love Granite City, and I've chosen to live here. My family is established here, we own a home here. I don't want to make my husband uproot himself. I don't want to make my child uproot himself, and I don't want to uproot myself. However, that does not mean that I am not one hundred percent engaged in the communities that I serve. I get text messages twenty-four seven, honestly, I have a problem with boundaries, if we're real, from people. I go to their soccer games, I go to their family parties, pre-COVID and hopefully post-COVID. And so I understand the desire and the need to have administrators who understand our community and who are invested in our community, but where you lay your head at night does not automatically equate to investment in the community. And you can be very much engaged, and I would argue, once someone gets to know our community and they're in a position, I think it could be a drop to work here and then move here. I want people to come to Granite City because they want to come to Granite City, not because they're forced to. And, I'm not a Realtor, but I would argue, one of the biggest draws to a community is high quality schools for a family and the level of education that you provide. And our job is revitalizing Granite City, and also, our main job is to do the best that we can ethically, morally, and fiscally for our community. And that is to attract the top candidates that we can and to find the very best for our children.
Well said. Thank you. Tell them.
Thank you.
I fully understand both sides of this, and I totally get it, and I've thought quite hard about it. But I guess to argue the opposing viewpoint for just a moment, you know, I understand the, oh, highest paid staff and all of that. I'm actually not in favor of keeping a residency policy for like our administrative support staff, the ones that, you know, everyone thinks administrators and, oh, they got all the six-figure salaries and this. And there's a lot who don't. And I realize that if you're going to entice people, a salary helps, but not everybody, not everyone who's considered an administrator makes that kind of salary. So I don't, I'm not in favor of keeping for those folks, but I do get, you know, that I still agree that this is a good community, and I don't think anyone here thinks it's not, but I believe we have great neighborhoods in which to move. If I'm looking at it community-minded, and I know that's not how I'm supposed to look at as a school board member, but if I go community-minded, I do have a fear that if we allow all of our administrators to live wherever, it may end up where somewhere south of forty percent of them are still here within a few years, which will hurt our tax base, which will hurt our community, which feeds into all of that with, those are the higher paying salaries, so, you know, we're all worried about attracting new business and restaurants and retail and this and that, and those, it's further reasons for them to not come here. So if I move on from the community-minded aspect, I look at it from a school-minded aspect. I see where our pools are shallow, our applicant pools, but I don't know that that is what has hurt our kids yet. And I say yet, because, you know, I mean, all things considered, we could get there. Personally, I do believe that a lot of the test scores, which everybody talks about, and Realtors, people looking for houses, they do look at that. And I was told recently that with certain business leaders, like that was their biggest concern, we've got to get our test scores up. But I see where some of those test scores, I don't know, we're losing my train of thought here, going on and on, but they just, I don't see where that is the problem, that is the fault of our administrators. I think it's more parental in nature. And certainly, there's the argument that good administrators could help figure out a way to fix that issue. But I still think we're that solid community, and I think that we can still attract some good candidates, though fewer admittedly. And that's just my opinion of it. I mean, I will, you know, I'm not going to argue this forever and ever and ever. That's just how I feel about it, so.
Helen, I think you make a valid point, because having engaged on social media with several people along with all of you.
Yeah.
That is a concern, and a big part of the mayor's plan to fortify the city, you know, I don't want to say fortify, we're not like going to war or anything, but revitalize. Because you would be the first one to go to war, let's be real. But, you know, regarding the property, the tax base, you know, income tax base, my question is, this policy has been in place for decades now, and we haven't seen it work to our benefit. So it's a gamble that I'm willing to take because I do believe there are other ways to revitalize the town. And number one, those test scores you mentioned, the number one, if you look at any research out there, the best way to boost test scores, to strengthen learning and achievement, is to have the strongest, most innovative, most qualified leadership possible, and to have people equipped to deal with those factors outside of school. Parents, for example. Trauma-informed education is such an important thing right now. Executive skills. We don't even know the fallout we're going to have from COVID yet. And so in order to take all of those and to ensure the. And so in order to take all of those and, and to ensure the best future for our schools and to im- improve our schools the best that we can, that's why I really strongly believe that we need to find the best of the best.
And, and I know, I'm just gonna throw this out there because I know that none of us are saying this, right? But as I, as I sit here and listen, I think people could think that, uh, maybe we don't have confidence in the administrators we have.
Oh, not, no, no.
And I think we have some terrific principals and administrators and stuff like that. I think this discussion is towards the future. Uh, not, not, uh, not as a, a shot to our current administrators at all.
Yeah, and just, just to add to Eric's point, um, after this policy, I would be willing to bet that there will still be people who either take the job and move to Granite City or are already in Granite City and still get a job in administration here. This is simply going to open up the applicant pool so we have a broader, uh, range of candidates. And like Eric said, the ones we have now are doing a fine job. But it, it helps any organization to have as many candidates for a job as you can and then you pick the most qualified person based on that.
And, and I'll say that you, you know, you're right, the talent pool is extremely important, right? From experience, you have people who apply, right? That aren't necessarily the people, while they're qualified, aren't the people that you want, right? And you want the best qualified applicants to, to come onto your team, right? I mean, and that's, uh, that's, I think, what we're all saying, so.
And I think, you know, as, knowing that we have some great interview, uh, teams, committees, at some point in time, when they've gone through the four applicants that have applied for an administrative position and really not found anyone that suits the, the scale of professionalism that has been set. Because we do wanna set the bar high for, for our administrators who come into our school. We need the bar high. What do we do then? Do we say, do we put in someone who just really doesn't fit, but he's the best or she's the best of the four? You know, where do we lower that? We have to think about our future and the, and what we're, what we're saying to, uh, our teachers. They, they have to have good administrators for themselves in their buildings and we want to be able to see that kind of person show up for interviews.
Talking about applicant pools just a little bit more, so you mentioned four and two superintendent. I'm gonna put you on the spot in a second. Did a little research because I think especially if you're outside of the field of education or any kind of hiring, you might be like, well, how many is a good applicant pool, you know? And based on research that I've done, twenty-five to fifty applicants, if you're being very bare bones about it, would qualify as a decent pool. Is that anywhere near some of the applicants that we've had in the past recently?
And, uh, Jim Parker, you might answer to this too quickly. Back in the day when there wasn't the teacher shortage, it would be common, correct? For to have fifty, seventy-five applicants for a teaching position, correct?
Absolutely.
What about an administrative position, even maybe ten?
The administrative pool was greater than also.
I just wanted to verify some of it.
I know, yeah, and I know of a district not far from here that had one hundred applicants for an assistant principal position.
Just happened.
This year, hiring for next year. If we're having four, you know, you know, how are we gonna compete with that?
How many applicants do we get for teaching positions now?
Jim, what are we at for some, very, what do you look at an average?
But residency's not a...
I know.
No, no, you're just talking teaching. But there is a teacher shortage and we know that that's what's affecting it.
Right.
So Jim, what is an average, you'd say, for a teaching position? We just posted one, what do we get for that?
I'd say for your more general positions like elementary ed, we may get ten to fifteen. When you start getting specialized like special ed or high school math or middle school science, we could be down between three and one or zero.
Yep, exactly.
And ideally, I would like us to attract teachers, bring them here, train them up in Granite City, encourage them to be those administrators, and then they are. There you go. But we, if you already have a policy right off the bat, and teachers do look at that, even if they're not administrators yet, they look at, how can I grow in my field? And especially in education when you have, I mean, you don't have tenure anymore, but you basically have tenure still. You know, like you have steps and salaries. You want to be entering into a district where you can see yourself staying for a long time and growing because the second you leave a district, you're gonna take a hit financially. Unless you're blessed to get into another district that's gonna give you some steps or something, you know?
And we even do that. We go up to ten.
Yep, yeah, we give credit for, credit for experience.
So, great discussion, excellent discussion. And, and I, I think we can sit here all night long, probably talk about the pros and the downs. Talon, I appreciate you taking the other side.
Yes, thank you.
To get those, the both viewpoints out, absolutely. And Eric, thanks for pointing out, this is not about, uh, any administrators today in any way, shape or form. So we've, um, this is definitely something, uh, that needs to be fully vetted and, and discussed for a district. It's something that's been in the works, uh, the discussion anyway, for a while. Even the, the former board, uh, had some discussions, uh, as they were leaving and, and then you all coming in here. So we purposely did not have this for a vote tonight. Uh, this was intended as a, as a full discussion. And, uh, so we, we can take it up later on at the end of the, uh, uh, meeting tonight as far as setting the agenda for next time, as far as having a resolution, um, and that policy to, to bring forward for the vote for the next meeting, uh, here in, in June. So, anybody else with a, a burning thought, desire or otherwise about this? That they just have to, really wanna get out there?
I would just like to give ourselves a pat on the back for being vulnerable and to have these conversations openly open like this. Um, one of the biggest things that our citizens have been asking for is transparency. And, um, I just really appreciate the respectful and very intentional dialogue that we've set tonight.
And, um, the meetings are now open to the public. And if you have public comment, there's various ways you can come and speak at a meeting or you can send an email to the board or... Yep, exactly. Um, I did have this on agenda as an action item, I don't know if...
We didn't know.
Okay, so I don't know if we need to move to table it or...
Was it just for discussion?
So it's actually not to table, uh, Rob? Correct me if I'm wrong.
You can't go wrong by tabling something, but that presi, presumes it was on the agenda for action.
I thought it was just a discussion.
I re, I, my reading was, it was a discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought that's what To- Tom told us as we...
Which is what I took away from the last... Which, that's exactly what I took away from the last meeting was discussion. Like, I know we, we kind of all were coalescing around the thought, uh, but, but there was also the discussion about we wanted to make sure that, that, uh, we all had time to think about it, the public had time to think about it.
And to respond after hearing us discuss.
Yes, absolutely. We'll take it up here at the end unless there's, there's thoughts otherwise. But I think I'm hearing general consensus anyway to bring this up for next board meeting, uh, in a few seconds, right? Very good, thank you all for your input on that, I appreciate that. No old business, new business. Uh, we have the breakfast after the bell, uh, hearing. So at this time, I would make, uh, ask for a motion to suspend the meeting so that we can have the hearing for the, uh, breakfast after the bell.
So move.
Second. And roll call please, Zach?
McMasters?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Canobel?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
None, aye, Womzner?
Aye.
So, uh, we can open the hearing, uh, and at this point, um, I think I might just read it.
Yeah, yeah, just read it.
So having notified the public through the posting a notice on the school district website for sending notification to the Illinois State School Board of Education fourteen days prior to the public hearing, along with providing the, uh, portions of education and cost analysis showing financial hardship, the Board of Education is now ready to proceed. So, um, really it's, uh, I don't know, if you wanna have somebody talk about it?
Zach, do you want to, uh, elaborate at all? Zach, sir?
No, this is just, this is just holding the statute requirement.
So we just say the, we're holding the hearing after the bell program to adopt the public resolution, which they have listed in their information, correct?
You have to exit the hearing and write a note on the resolution.
Right, yep, yeah, that is it.
So, you can just make a motion to exit the hearing.
Any, any comments on this? And Zach, you wanna talk about just a second, for, especially for our new board members, about what this is and what it does?
Yeah, this is basically, this is basically just to provide breakfast after the bell, which would kinda treat it, in my mind, kind of like the lunch scenario. So you'd lose some classroom time. Right now, we have, we feed everybody. Uh, as kids get there in the morning, they go into the cafeteria, they eat their breakfast before they go to class, before the bell rings, the buses get there early. Um, if there is a kid that shows up late and they are hungry, I promise you, our people feed them. Um, nobody is going to go hungry on this. Um, this is just a formality, um, to opt us out of this.
Yep, because if we did it, it would require us to provide that and really disrupt class time and everything else.
It's, it's incredible.
You cut in instructional time big time with this.
I, I witnessed it in other districts and it can take up to fifteen to twenty minutes. And it's usually the same time every day. And then, and, and we already have food for them, we already have...
So to put it like, you know, in a layman's pers- perspective, if I'm getting this right. So like, say your school starts at eight, but you would have a scheduled breakfast time after eight o'clock where it's like a lunchtime, so it's not like, come get your food by class.
In fact, then they stop, level class, they have to go out in the hall and someone has to man those two, so you have to have cafeteria workers bring the food over. They do it in the hallway or something.
And that all comes as great cost to the, the district.
No, it isn't, there's no cost to the district, right? Zach, for breakfast?
No, if we were to...
Oh, and that's not a...
There would be, there would be bargaining issues across the block.
That would be the huge part. So we're gonna have to call in people to do things and change in their work environment. There's a lot of issues. But for me, it's the loss of instructional time when we already provide food for them.
And this is something that's already been happening every year, you just have to do this every year. I'm just, I just wanna get these things out for anybody watching so they know we're not trying to take breakfast away from kids.
No, you'll, you'll need to make same agenda items next year at this time.
Yeah.
And I've only seen maybe two districts in all over multiple, multiple counties that try to do it and they're trying to get out of it. So...
Very good, any other comments? I, I would entertain a motion to, uh, resume our meeting or, or exit the, uh, hearing.
Exit the meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second by Talon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go. Make it easier on you today.
Thank you.
And then I would entertain a motion, uh, for, uh, authorizing a resolution for opting out of the breakfast after the bell due to financial hardship.
Seven.
Second.
Motion by Eric, second by Linda. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Canobel?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
None, aye, McMasters?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Womzner?
Aye.
And item ten C, tuck pointing bid for Granite City High School.
Um, Mr. President of the Board, Eric, are you there to talk about the tuck pointing bid? Mr. Smith? Eric Smith? Okay, well, everything that you have, Mary, in their content, they do have the pictures and everything for tuck pointing, correct?
We already did at the other meeting.
At the other meeting, so...
All those pictures.
Right, so now they're just looking to gain approval? Can someone try to find that?
I think we're okay.
Is there anyone?
There, oh, there he is, okay, I wondered, cause we talked today already, who you're gonna say. Do you wanna fill them in on the tuck pointing bed and what you talked about with the different locations at the high school?
Yes, we have seven different areas at the high school. On the west side of the building are the main entrance. Uh, and these are entire walls that we're looking at. We've had some patchwork in the past, but we are looking to replace all the mortar and, uh, do the tuck pointing from, for the whole entire wall. And in that bid, we've had seven different, uh, uh, walls bid. And we had a fixed budget for this. And in that bid, we're able to almost get all of that done, uh, besides two areas, uh, and still stay within our budget for the year.
And, and Eric, the west side of the building's probably the worst, is that correct?
Yes, that catches, that catches the majority of the weather. And it has, um, some of the older parts of the building, um, towards Grand Avenue, the auto shop. Uh, the van wall right now is actually leaking inside of the van room. Uh, that's a very bad area. We have different windows where the plaster is bubbled from leaking. And those areas are all in this, uh, bid.
So as far as what we're doing tonight, um, it says like, you know, when, when the bid comes back that we deem acceptable, we'd like to start the project. Is there, are you saying that there's already like a, a set number for that that's in the budget? And that's what will be deemed as acceptable? And then you just have authorization to go forward from that point?
I am sorry, if, if you're addressing me, I can barely hear anything on my...
He wanted to know what, what the next action is, if it's in the budget. And Zach, you might be able to answer this as well?
Yeah, because I, I mean, I was just asking that...
The other Zach.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Suri might be able to answer as well, too.
Yeah, both, Zach can answer and, and Zach can ask, so...
I should say that, Mr. Suri, right, I've got a lot...
When, uh, it says like, you know, when the bid comes back that we deem acceptable, we'd like to start the project as soon as possible. So as far as what we're doing, um, like that acceptable line, is that just, it's already in the budget? And that would be what is acceptable, anything that falls within our already budgeted range?
Yeah, what we, what we had, we, uh, Zach and I got together and, uh, Stephanie was involved. We had a dollar amount that we wanted to spend, not knowing what bids were gonna come back, who was gonna bid on that. Uh, we, I was unsure whenever I presented this to you guys, how expensive this bid was gonna be. It may have been way out of our range. But if it was in our range, I wanted to start this process of tuck pointing as soon as possible. With, as late as we're getting started in the start of school, the contractor, uh, James Stat was the one who was the only contractor actually bid on it. Um, we sent it to other contractors who have worked for us, uh, throughout the years. All of them are tied up with work. Uh, but he has ensured me, if he can get started on this, he can get most of the grinding, the loud stuff completed. So if it would run into the school time, uh, or the start of school, it would be quiet. If, he would not have, uh, uh, the grinding going on. So it would be a lot quieter and better for, uh, the students in the building.
And, and Zach, what's the total dollar amount that was budgeted, please?
Uh, we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for this. We were hoping to bump it up a little bit more, but the cool drive-in situation probably reduced that number a little as we've had to shift some funds there. Um, I fully anticipated this in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. So he's operating well within his means and I believe that bid's a little over. I told him we have some contingency in his to handle that.
Yeah, that makes sense, thank you.
Uh, can I ask a question? Eric, you mentioned the bubbling of the drywall. Now, this is not, has anything to do with, uh, uh, the contractor. This is something that's gonna be inside. They won't be involved in that, will they? We have our own guys that do that?
Yes, uh, they will not be involved in any interior repair. This is exterior tuck pointing only. What has happened is water has seeped through the brick, seeped through the block. And it's actually bubbling the paint, uh, in the van room. If you're ever in the van room, you can see, uh, where, where one whole wall is just bubbled up. Uh, and the paint is, is, uh, letting loose from the block. And that's what we're trying to stop.
Eric, do we actually have the bid yet? No, right?
Yes, we do, I just received that bid.
Okay. And then, and, and Zach asked, is it acceptable?
Yes, uh, out of the, out of the seven areas, we can do five of those areas in our budget. Um, I had seven areas because I was, again, unsure of the extent of the bid and the extent of the tuck pointing that was gonna be necessary. So we're, we, I, I kind of had more areas in there than what we really needed, but we have a good start next year, where to start?
Okay, thank you.
Eric, I appreciate you getting creative, get, get this done and work with Zach in order to make sure that this happens, that the, uh, the tuck pointing is something that typically is never on anybody's radar for old buildings. And so you looking at it, I, I certainly appreciate it.
Thanks for the break, Talon.
So, and thanks for being here tonight. Uh, with that, uh, I would entertain a motion to accept the bid and move forward with the tuck pointing. So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
So we're accepting the bid as is or accepting whatever bid that they find to be acceptable? Like what conclusion they draw?
For the five areas.
Okay.
For the five areas.
Because it just said, when the bid comes back, that we deem acceptable, because when we're sure like, it's acceptable, okay.
And roll call, please.
Canogle?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
None? Aye? That is me. McMasters?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Wilmzner?
Aye.
Uh, no reports or other communications, is that correct?
That's right.
And that takes us to executive session, and tonight we have one item in the executive, uh, executive session. Um, and there are different exceptions noted under five ILCS one twenty dash two, open meetings, and the one tonight is negotiations under two C two. And I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Very good. We are in executive session, the time is?
Five fifty-one.
Five fifty-one.